Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am going to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole for October 31, 2018. With me at the diocese today are council members Palmasano, Johnson, Goodman, Ellison, Orsami, Schrader, Council President Bender, Council Member Conno, Wright, and Fletcher. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. And, council members, we are going to have our regular reports of the standing committees and we will begin with the Budget Committee Chair by Council Member Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This past cycle, we received our last budget presentation and that was the Public Works presentation. We also had a capital and debt budget in MBC and an NPRB informational presentation. We'll be starting with the next piece of the budget process, starting tomorrow morning, with a public hearing and I would be happy to answer any questions. There are no things to consider for this Friday's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano. Are there any questions? I have one question. What time is the budget hearing scheduled for tomorrow?
Madam Chair, it starts at 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, thank you very much. And let the record reflect that we have been joined by Councilmember Gordon. Our next committee report is the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee and that committee's chair is Councilmember Gordon. I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 15 items forward for approval on Friday. Item number one is changes in liquor licensing classifications to simplify the different classes of licenses allowed with or without entertainment. Item number two is off-sale liquor spacing restrictions. This is in anticipation of a change in the charter for the upcoming election. Item three is just simply a new license in Sunday's sidewalk cafe license. Item four is probably the most major item on our agenda. This is noticed as multiple family rental dwellings, advanced sale of notice ordinance is sometimes referred to as advanced notice. This item was moved forward without recommendation so we could consider the feedback that we were given in the public hearing last week. Councilmember Schrader has sent out a marked up version of the ordinance and we're happy to answer any questions about it at the end of my report. Item five is the changes that Councilmember Cunningham is bringing forward with regard to conduct on premise and that's already had a public hearing and a discussion in committee in the last cycle. Item number six are the liquor license approvals and seven are the renewals, eight are the business license renewals, nine are the gambling license approvals, 10 are the gambling license renewals. Item number 11 is the settlement conference. Item 12 is a refinancing of revenue notes. Item 13 is a rental license reinstatement, as is items 14 and 15. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, as is Councilmember Schrader, with regard to advanced notice of sale that is finally moving through the council on Friday.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will next hear from the Housing Policy and Development Committee Chair by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Vice President. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is going to be bringing forward 10 items and the first seven are all land sales. You can check your agenda for the addresses on those. They're all land sales in North Minneapolis. Item eight is approving an appropriation of some income through the Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Program. That's over $600,000. Item nine is approving our 2018 Emergency Solutions Grant. We're going to be approving two capital improvements. The most significant is nearly $300,000 for the Harbor Light Center of the Salvation Army's and the other one is nearly $100,000 which goes to the Bridge for Youth. And the 10th item is Passions of Resolution authorizing us to move forward with our Minneapolis 4D Affordable Housing Incentive Program for next year and this is based on what we learned from the pilot program and this is a much expanded program which will be open to a lot more property owners and including as few units in those properties as duplexes and up. Happy to take questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will next hear from the Public Health and Environment Civil Rights and Engagement Committee and that committee's chair, Councilmember Cunningham, is not available and so we will hear once again from the Vice Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
It's great to be back with you all for my second presentation. This is a report from the Public Health, Environment, and Civil Rights and Engagement Committee. That committee will be bringing forward four items for consideration on Friday. The first is passage of amendments to our Small and Underutilized Business Enterprise Program ordinance. Second one is a resolution establishing the South Side Green Zone Council and also making a direction to staff regarding the $75,000 city allocation and how that will be spent. Third item is a resolution approving the restructuring of the Minneapolis Community Environmental Advisory Commission. And the fourth item is approving a name change. This is following the name change of a familiar lake in the city and so the neighborhood group, Calhoun Area Residents Action Group, decided to do away with that name and changed their name to South Uptown. I guess the South Uptown Neighborhood. I can answer any questions or provide any further details on those items if you'd like.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. We have a question or a comment from Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note that on item number two, Part One, we've been getting a lot of correspondence, both foreign and opposing the current state of the Green Zones Resolution. And the thing that stuck out to me most was that a lot of the folks who, a lot of the names of the folks who have kind of been opposing the current language of the resolution are some of the very folks that we've been asking to do this work, work on the Green Zones for the past year and a half or two. And so I, you know, that was kind of alarming to me and I wanted to, you know, just flag that and urge my colleagues to read that over. I think that if the very people who, you know, we asked to take their time and work in good faith on behalf of the city to come up with some recommendations for the Green Zones and those are the folks who feel like they're being sort of like alienated or they feel like the process seemed transparent but then some decisions were made that didn't happen in public or in a clear-cut way, I think that's caused for alarm for me. And I'd just like to see us figure out a way to remedy that and figure out a more transparent way for folks to get their feedback because I don't, you know, as we embark on this work on the North Side, I want to be able to lean on the experience of the South Side folks who have, you know, been doing the work of the South Side Green Zones and if folks feel like, you know, oh, we were, felt like we were ignored right at the end, then I feel like that could have a heavy blow to morale and I don't want to see that, see that happen. So, you know, between now and the next council meeting, I'd be, I'd be happy to figure out what we could do to increase some transparency and get folks, and again, these are some of the very folks who I, whose names I recognize as having been working on the Green Zones for the past year and a half and I just don't want them feeling alienated as we, as we proceed. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. And the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I just thought I could respond a little bit because I happened to have been very involved in the iterations of this before it came to the committee, having been a champion of the Green Zones for a long time and was able to get it into our Climate Action Plan and I care about this a lot. And when I saw the resolution kind of recommendation coming up from the work group that was established and, and whose work actually had ended because we only approved them for half, I forget if it was six months, but I think their, their time ended in about August. And I met with staff and saw the recommendation. I had some concerns about it and wanted to make some changes so it was really important to me to offer my time to go to another meeting so that I could meet with people who were involved in drafting that, explain the idea of making some changes, gathering some more input. I think the crux of the matter that people were concerned about is whether you should live inside the actual boundaries of the Green Zone or not. We, there seemed to be consensus that a majority should, but then after that meeting, there were still people concerned that they wanted it to be led and the voting members should actually live in the Green Zone, which is fairly consistent with our original intentions of the Green Zone of empowering people from these communities to be involved. So then we actually, after the first meeting, not really landing on a big consensus, I met with the co-author of the resolution, Councilmember Conno, and others and we also heard back from some people who still weren't satisfied with 80% and really were, this was important to them. So we went back and met again with the council members, the two of us, meeting with the community. So we did give opportunities. We tried to engage, tried to explain our rationale. Somehow I couldn't win everybody over to the idea of the 100% residency requirement. But one of the things that we did mention that people can keep in mind is the city council can waive the residency requirement whenever we want to. So, and also, all the meetings are open for people to get involved. So if in the end, it comes up that there's a couple of people who we waived residency requirement on because, so they can participate because it's so important to us or to the residents involved in bringing the names forward through the application process, we can do that. Also, I think it's important people realize they can participate in those meetings. They're generally open and we, I'll also note, we made some other concessions that we thought would, were kind of looking to the community. It's a tough process, but I think we also, I think it's important if the city is still, the city council has ownership of these things, that we still get to touch it and modify it near the end. But, so, just to give a little background, I know people are getting emails about it and I'm happy to talk also here or separately about the process and how flawed it was and how I could do a better job next time and stuff like that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will next hear from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee Chair by Councilmember Conno.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President. And the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee has seven items to bring forward for recommendation and I will also add another point which is connected to a staff presentation that we received regarding the city's contract with the jail. So I will read the items on the printed agenda right now and then I will invite Councilmember Gordon to speak on the last item. So the first one is the agreement between the Minneapolis Fire Department and Big Fish Entertainment to record Minneapolis Fire Department personnel for a television series titled First Responders Live. Second item is a training reimbursement for Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education, which is the approved training. Number three is a donation of repurposed heavy-duty tactical shelters for use in tactical operations. Number four is a donation for travel and lodging expenses for New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services Symposium. Item five is a donation for travel lodging and lodging expenses for Special Olympics of Minnesota Law Enforcement Torch Run Planning. Number six is a 911 Director Survey Staff Direction. Number seven is a contract with Infinity Wireless for a two-way radio airtime trunking services contract. And those items we bring forward and then we would like some time to bring up the resolution that most councilmembers should have in front of them.
Thank you, Chair Conno. Councilmember Gordon, are you going to speak to this resolution?
I'd appreciate the opportunity maybe just to help people understand it a little bit. This is something that I mentioned doing at the committee. I'm not on the Public Safety Committee, but I was there in attendance for this issue. This is something that I've been following now for a long time and it started in April with some staff directions to get some recommendations and even some recommendations about our contract with, with the jail. There are practices going on at the jail that I think many people think are, put our residents at risk for deportation without even going through due process. I'd heard rumors and stories for a long time about family members who would be arrested and then they would never return home. It really wasn't until after the last presidential election, I guess, and some sequence of events that the sheriff then seemed to be willing to share more specific information about what the practices were. I actually had a conversation with him on the telephone and he described how he would meet ICE in the, in what they call the Sally Port and turn over individuals at the request of Immigration and Customs Enforcement. What we have is a contract with the county jail and they actually service the jail for all arrestees from Minneapolis and I was concerned that we're actually violating our own separation ordinance when we're doing business with the jail because once our arrestee goes there, it seems like those things are being ignored. So, we learned some, got some more information, talked to some more allies, talked to, worked with the county and I just have to say that there are many people in the county administration, and we heard about this at the committee, who are very supportive and assisting and are trying to find ways to make some changes and some improvements as well. I also want to thank Marion Green, I had a long conversation with her. She's the Hennepin County Commissioner who's been working on these issues too. So, this, this resolution would be a small step in building on some of those discussions to say that we, we want to look at amending our contract and we want to amend our contract in some specific ways that will better protect those residents that might be at highest risk for being detained and for deportation. Also, incidentally, we learned in committee, and it was, it was a verbal report, so there's not a lot of written information, but we learned that Ramsey County follows different practices. I think there might be some openness for these discussions, but I think it's important before staff goes and starts looking at moving forward with ideas to amend the contract that we weigh in as a council and the mayor and we say we want them to proceed to do this and enter into some discussions. The contract can be amended quite simply, as long as both parties agree to any amendments to it, we can make those amendments. People have more questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. And we have a comment or question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. One of the really important things about working in government is our ability to collaborate with other levels of government. We've already learned the hard way that a lack of collaboration with Hennepin County has resulted in us being responsible financially for much of the encampment. I'm wondering, Madam Chair, through Councilmember Gordon, you just, you note that you discussed this with Commissioner Green, but I'm not hearing that Commissioner Green is enthusiastic about this. In fact, quite the opposite. And so I'm wondering why the timing is that you're bringing this forward right now, four days before an election. It seems to me as though if you were trying to get some changes in the way that this operated to benefit real people, you would do something that would be actually in collaboration with the county rather than suggesting that this is in collaboration when others are hearing it is not. And I'm wondering why you're bringing it forward right now if we're really actually trying to help people. It seems like the timing is somewhat suspicious.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. And the Chair recognizes Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I will just provide some context. As you know, this year, the decision was made to have the Public Safety Committee meet once a month and that has presented some challenges in terms of how to manage the workload of public safety for our city because we used to meet twice a month. I wasn't in the committee then, but that has led to a bottleneck of work for the committee and we authorized as a committee a staff direction on this issue in the first quarter of the year. Because of the workload, that staff direction was not brought forward until I got an email from a small business owner in Minneapolis who was really concerned because an employee he's had for 10 years plus who worked in the kitchen was put in deportation proceedings through, through the Hennepin County Jail interface. And immediately, I reached out to Councilmember Gordon, who co-authored the staff direction with me early on in the spring, which our committee did approve and the council approved as well, and said, hey, we really got to figure out how to bring this back up into the queue because this issue continues to happen. And it's actually one of the most, it's one of the most debilitating feelings when you as an elected official are out in the community and people come to you saying, hey, there are people that are being detained by Minneapolis Police who are being unfairly deported. This is not okay. We need to be doing something about it. And then we reach out to people at the county to have this discussion and consistently commissioners tell us, well, we have nothing to do with it. This has to do with the sheriff's office. This is not our fault. We don't, we don't control his budget. We can't tell him what to do or what not to do. And so the message for me was clear that this had nothing to do with county commissioners and in fact, it has a lot to do with the policies and practices that are run directly out of the jail. So, the timing is what it is. I'm not really concerned with the electoral, I guess, timing right now and honestly, I mean, there's, seems to be, seems to be like there's always an election. There's probably one year in our four-year cycle where there is no election. So we can't really pause our work for the elections. The timing just happened to line up in this way because there was a sense of urgency coming from community saying, people are getting deported, people are being targeted more now than ever. And the events in our country over the last two to three weeks will tell you that yes, there is something different going on. And so for me, this has really nothing to do with what you just mentioned, Councilmember Goodman, but I'm just explaining it to you from the perspective of committee chair and how we handle our work and how we engage it, that sometimes, you know, issues do, are supposed to be kind of in queue, in line, and other things take priority. You've probably seen that some of our Public Safety Committee meetings go three hours long and people have to leave. They can't finish the meeting. Sometimes folks are, you know, here the whole time and, you know, mentally, we're, you know, struggling to continue to retain attention from the public and the committee to just get through the amount of work. And so I'm hopeful that, you know, some of these timing issues will get fixed next year when we meet twice a month. But I will have to say that from my perspective, this is not about timing on the elections, but it's just about timing of the workflow and the fact that this is a priority for many people in our community and it just so happened to be that this was the time that we could bring it up currently.
Thank you. Comments from Councilmember Gordon?
Yeah, I will just note that I did reach out particularly to Commissioner Green because I know that she's been working on this issue. I'm not sure when conversations or what folks are necessarily talking about and I don't want to pretend to speak for anybody else, but I forbid her the language this morning, had a 45-minute conversation with her around 11 to 12 and she actually gave some very valuable input. I think there was some misunderstanding about whether or not this was about the jail contract or if it was about some bigger issue and we were somehow taking on the county. And when she understood that this was focused on the actual contract that we have with the county jail, I think it made a lot more sense to her and those practices. So, but I will, I will reach out again and certainly try to, try to listen. And I suppose if other partners at the county, including the sheriff, wants to give some feedback, I'm willing to listen to what he has to say as well, if that's what we're referring to.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. And next we'll hear from Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't disagree with anything in this resolution. This all sounds like something we, is absolutely in line with our values and everything that we work for, for people that live in our community. I am concerned that we put our city coordinator and city attorney's office in a very difficult position when we direct them to work with Hennepin County and the sheriff's office if we haven't been in communication with them and if they're not ready and interested in working through those changes. So I guess I'm, I'm curious, based on the feedback that I've heard right now, have we, have we had those conversations with the sheriff's office at all? I was just with the county commissioner who expressed concerns about it, so I'm not here to characterize other people's opinions, but I'm just curious, is this something that seems from the author's perspectives like something that Hennepin County is interested in embarking on with us at this point in time?
Councilmember Gordon?
At the committee, we heard that they had already embarked on those discussions based on the staff direction, so there already had been some conversations. There wasn't any clear direction about where to go with those from the council yet, but actually, I think they have scheduled a time to meet with the county administrator and to set up a meeting with the sheriff to have some of these conversations anyway, following sometime in November, I guess. So, yep, now I think that we even heard from the city attorney who's sitting right, am I right, that she's had some conversations with the sheriff himself about some of these things, but a lot of those conversations were, the city coordinator was involved in those, talking to the county administrators.
Councilmember Palmasano?
No, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions, we will hear from the Transportation and Public Works Committee Chair, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding six items for full council consideration. Item one is the sanitary sewer serviceability charges. Two is the contract amendment for traffic control devices. Three is a temporary easement for the Cedar Avenue South Sanitary Reconstruction Project. Four is uniform assessment rates, establishing 2019 rates. And the final two items are low bids for activities of the department. I'll stand for questions, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright, are there any questions? Seeing none, our next committee report is the Ways and Means Committee Chair by Councilmember Orsami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Ways and Means Committee has 21 items, 21 items to bring forth to the full council's attention. Items number one, two, and three are legal settlements. Item number four is a navigation center development. Item number five is a contract amendment with Hagan Christensen Architects for the Minneapolis Police Department. Item number six is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Tarasol Replacement. Item number seven is a contract amendment with Premier Electric Corporation for contract closeout of the portico and exterior project. Item number eight is a contract with Wheeling Event Staff Services for event-based and building security. Item number nine is a contract amendment with Security Task USA for security services as operated by various city departments. Item number 10 is a contract with Little Dog, which is a name for the UPS store for the business center lease at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item number 11 is a contracts for citywide temporary staffing services. Item number 12 is a grant for resiliency in communities after stress and trauma. Item number 13 is a grant for Pioneers and Soldier Cemetery Resolution Project. Item number 14 is 2018 third-quarter donations. Item number 15 is a contract amendment with Pi Consulting and Engineering for additional building enclosure commissioning services for the public service building project. Item number 16 is a bid for the new public service building steel, tax-exempt material purchase. Item number 17 is a contract amendment with Carlton Companies, Inc. for additional costs associated with the demolition for the new public service building. Item number 18 is a contract with Professional Service Industries, Inc. for construction, testing, and inspection services for the public service building project. Item number 19 is a contract amendment with Kevitt Companies for additional costs associated with the construction, with amended construction schedule for the public service building. with the construction, with amended construction schedule for the public service building. Item number 20 is a contract amendment with M.A. Mortensen for additional construction manager as an advisor services for the public service building. And item number 21 is a bid for concrete steel installation and waterproofing for the new public service building. And I stand for questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Chair Worsami. Are there any questions? Our next committee report, then, is the Zoning and Planning Committee chaired by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Zoning and planning will be bringing forward a wide item for approval on Friday, and that's the approval of an application submitted by Yellow Tree Corp., located at 1618 Street East, and I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions? Next committee report is the Executive Committee Report, and that chair is Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Johnson will give the report today.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee is bringing forward two items to the council. The first is an appointed position in the Public Works Department, the Deputy Director of Public Works Business Administration. The second item is a collective bargaining agreement with the Construction Equipment Operators Unit. And I'll also note that the committee took a third action to approve the mayor's interim appointment of Kim Keller as the Director of Regulatory Services, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, that completes our business this afternoon, and with no further business to come before us, this meeting is adjourned.